Roll call for the city council meeting of Wednesday, August 20th, 2025 at 6:30 PM. Council President Witherspoon, Members Flores, Nelson, Schoff, and Titus. Councilmember Brzezinski and Councilmember Troop are both absent.
Thank you very much. I'm going to ask us all to stand and have a moment of silence and then the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Motion to accept the minutes from August 6, 2025, city council meeting and bills for payment on August 22nd and August 29th. Members Flores, Nelson, Schoff, Titus, Witherspoon.
Do we have any repository sales?
Come on up.
Yes, please. Please give us your name and the property you're concerned about.
My name is Brian Burks and that's 1047 East Fifth Street.
What are your plans or intentions for the property?
The property is beside the property I own right now, so.
What is your goal to do? If you were to obtain it, what would you want?
It just expands my property.
You plan to maintenance it?
When I bought the house, the realtor told me that that was part of the property. So from the beginning, I always thought it was mine.
Oh, okay.
I was paying the taxes one year and I saw it on the list. Then I had pre-COVID, started the process and something had gone wrong, so just finally getting here now. But I have been taking care of the property for the past seven years.
Yeah, that's one of our questions is if you plan on maintaining it and if you've already...
I've been maintaining it. I've been actually contacted the city a couple of times to remove tires and TVs, but I got nowhere with that. I got rid of a lot of the trash that was in there. I had to rent a U-Haul and I filled it, took it to a junkyard myself, but I didn't take the tires and the TV because they didn't accept them.
One of the other questions that we have on our list is, do you have any or had any code violations within the past three years?
Not that, no, not that I know of.
It's a vacant property?
Yeah, it's just a lot. It's like right beside my house. Like I said, when I bought the house, you know, even the pictures and the...
That's all? That's all the questions?
Okay, we will not vote on that tonight. You will be contacted by our club's office and we'll vote on it at our next meeting.
Okay, sounds good. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other repository sales? Are there any other repository sales? Are there any other repository sales? Here in none. And we have no presentation this evening. Okay, next will be public comments. Please give us your name and your municipality. And you will have five minutes to address council. Council, well, no, come on up, please. And council and the presenter will not get into a dialogue.
My name is Freda Tefra. I live in the city of Erie. First, I will say that I totally support the family of Marcello Woodard in their quest to have some answers at this stage in the process. I understand the importance of having a thorough investigation, but I think comparatively with other things that have gone on, there would have been more information released to the public at this point. And in this case, there should be more information that the family and the public should have access to. So similarly, I will be talking about some less than fair situations. When the city first talked about their quality of life process, that they were going to have inspectors go out and issue fines based on weeds and grass height and broken glass and whatever, at that time I said, fine, but what about the commercial properties? What about all the commercial properties not maintaining their sidewalks, not providing access to their sidewalks in the wintertime because they have blocked the sidewalk with huge berms for months at a time? What about that? That's not, that's not doing things fairly. What about Raspberry Street where there is still the waste management? Our contractor's property has not maintained their sidewalk and has not removed the overhanging vegetation despite numerous complaints on my part. What about the properties on Green Garden where the grasses weigh more than 10 inches? So imagine my surprise when I got a notice of violation for weeds and grass height. And what was even more interesting is they were using the wrong weed definition in the document. I'm very familiar with the weed definition that the city took four years to pass. And when I did speak to the person, I was informed they weren't concerned about weeds, but that my grass was more than 10 inches high. Well, I'd actually mowed the grass the day before. But the interesting thing was I got the letter on Saturday and I was leaving town on Sunday for almost two weeks. What if the letter had come on Monday and it said, do something in seven days or you're going to get fined? What if somebody's on vacation and they get this letter, but it doesn't come before they leave? Anyway, yeah, I don't know if my grass was 10 inches high. I tend to not mow it more than every three weeks, but it had been mowed. And as Jasmine and some of you know, I have the first homegrown national park garden in Erie County and a very unusual but deliberately managed native land, plant landscape. So I was concerned that the city is using the wrong weed definition in their standard letters that it gets sort of spit out by some program. We worked hard to get just one paragraph and it should be in those letters and manage that way. But what about all the things that the businesses are doing? I was told it's a different department because if it's the sidewalk, it's engineering. Why isn't, the guy said he just sort of drove by and saw my grass high. Why isn't somebody just driving by and seeing what the commercial properties are doing? And in the winter, when the things aren't cleared? Why are residences being more severely penalized for similar kinds of violations in businesses? And I was told, well, gee, you know, it's really a lot of trouble to track down the out-of-state businesses and property owners so we don't go after them. But we go after the residential properties because it's easy to harass and scare the hell out of them. So I really would like the city to do something about the management of... I have my Judy Human shirt on today once again because I am concerned about access. Not so much weeds and 10-inch lawns. I'm concerned about sidewalk access for people with kids and strollers and walkers and people who are blind and we should be able to walk on our sidewalks all year round. I also would like to mention item number five for first reading. Sure would like to have more information about that than what is given in the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
My name is Heather Garzinski. I'm in the city of Erie. I'd like to say that I have an associate's in human services, a dual bachelor's in sociology of criminal justice and almost a master's degree in criminology. And I will tell you that I have studied incidences such as what happened in Ferguson, Missouri, what happened in Minneapolis, Baltimore, what happens when these riots and unrest happen. I want to totally applaud the Justice for Marcello Coalition and all of the people that have been rallying and protesting and they are determined to do it the right way. But I just want to give a little backstory in the fact that every single one of those places I mentioned prior did everything the right way. And the problem that happened was their legislators and their leaders had their fingers in their ears saying, na, 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 I can't hear you. And the only time they heard them is when a building burned. So when a building burned, that was that can you hear me now moment? So I encourage not just you, because I understand your jurisdiction is very different, that anybody listening or anybody that cares or wants to avoid further escalation, to take the fingers out of their ears and start listening, because this is a huge problem in the city of Erie where council is paid hundreds of thousands of dollars in the back door for police violence that most of us don't even know has even happened just to quiet people. Eventually, there will be that camel that breaks the straw, the straw that breaks the camel's back. And what do we do then? Do we blame the people or do we blame the leadership? I'm not saying you guys in particular, but in general, because if there was somebody listening and somebody putting things in place to be able to prevent these situations from happening, there would be no Justice for Marcello. There would be no, any of this because things we put in place to prevent it from happening in the first place. And the fact that they have had to wait, it's been 49 days. They are on paid vacation while Marcello's family is at home mourning, waiting for answers. That is not okay on any level. If it were him that shot a parole officer, you would have known his name the minute it happened. But we don't know the person. Well, we know, but not officially, right? The person's name that happened. And I'm going to tell you a little side story on why I know that they're right when they say who the names are, is in Ferguson, Missouri, there was a group of people that were anonymous hackers that were in a little chat room, a little secret thing, trying to figure out how they could figure out who did it. They said, I got one of two people, but I don't know which one it is. We're going to release one. If it's not the right one, they'll tell us who it really is. Nobody's come out and said, that's not them. So we know who it is. Let's have some action here. I mean, you guys are supposed to represent us. Our taxpayer dollars go to you, they go to our state parole officers, all of that. Somebody has to advocate more for this family because at the end of the day, it affects all of us. I have children that could literally be affected by these problems, not because they're on parole, but because they're young black men. All of us do. And we can't wait for another one to be the one that is the straw that breaks the camel's back to where the change is going to be made. Why not open your ears, take the cotton out of your ears and put it in your mouth for a second, not you guys, but in general, and do something? Listen, because there are way bigger problems than just this. This, there were a lot of problems led up to this and those need to be corrected before we can fix those problems. I'm just telling you because I don't care who did it, I don't care what they did. I want to know why. Why did this happen? Because if there's no why, there's no who or what. That's it. Let's start concentrating on the why these types of things happen so we can fix it and it doesn't happen anymore. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Deontay Cooley and I'm here to speak to the same issue that the young lady who just came before me. We're still seeking justice for Marcello Woodard. I'm aware that you all put out a letter to our governor, to the state police and to the district attorney. We have yet to hear from you all if you have heard anything or if you've heard nothing from all publicly. And as well as she said, they have yet to release the names. I'm not sure if you all have been paying attention to what's going on in the city, but it is creating tension within the city in this time for kids to go back to school. A lot of kids' parents were affected by this, a lot of young people were affected by this. And then now people are looking for something to blame. There's issues with, okay, now people feel like we're having problems with the police. And it's like, oh, we're only doing this because they know they can get away with killing us. You know, now there's an issue with the PIAA in the schools and it's like, oh, this is just a racist city. So pretty much what she was saying, I did not catch her name, but it is building and when you're dealing with a population of people who are looking for answers and they're looking for somebody to blame, they're going to blame anything. And when anything is blamed, trouble is going to happen and trouble is going to continue to come. And we don't want for it to be trouble, but it does seem as though it's going to take for something to happen before something does happen because there's been protests. We've been to city council, we've been to county council. We were at the eight grade Tuesdays the other day, like everything has been peaceful. Some of the things have been unorganized, but we have been attempting to do things the right way to the best of our ability. Nobody has come to us and said, hey, don't do it this way, do it this way. We all know that, again, law does not happen here. Decisions are not made here. I'm going to continue to reiterate the fact that every single person in this room has a platform, has a voice and has resources that they can reach out to, to continue to apply pressure. I understand that it's not going to be an overnight thing. I understand that we have to be patient for justice to happen, but we do not have to be quiet. So we're going to continue to make noise. We're going to continue to be on social media. We're going to continue to be in these public places and hopefully the people who aren't willing to be patient don't act as to what the young lady just said, because that is not my, that is not my goal, that is not what we are looking to accomplish here, but nobody is telling us anything. It is weeks, on top of weeks. Like I just left the Shades Beach and everybody just looks like, oh, we're just having a good time here. Let's get Christine and Blake, people as if they've forgotten and we have not forgotten. And I don't care if it's 300 people in this room or if I'm going to be the only person in this room, I'm going to continue to come down here and speak because I have concerns for my community. When we talk about public safety, we all are elected officials, again, you all are elected officials who live here. We should be caring for the concerns of our citizens and we should be making enough noise until we get answers. And how are we satisfied with not hearing anything? How are we satisfied with our community being torn apart? People looking for people to blame. You have brothers and sisters getting into arguments, boyfriends and girlfriends getting into arguments and it's all over a bunch of mess. And I know that everything that's going on in the community, I know personally, everything that's going on in the community is not to blame for this situation specifically, but everybody is not aware of that. And then when we talk about mental health and we talk about how people are coping with the loss of their father or the loss of their brother, we're talking, now we're talking substance abuse, we're talking alcohol abuse, we're talking people acting in behaviors, violent rage, fights and trouble and stuff like that. So again, when we talk about justice for Marcello, it's not just lock somebody up. How are we taking care of our community that is impacted by this? There are going to be kids who are going to be in school who are going to be calling teachers racist because when anytime something happens, oh, you're just like the parole agent. So I'm not sure if everybody who's in here, who's watching this, who will watch this, understands the magnitude of how this can impact our city, but people are always looking for an excuse to blame. People are always looking for an excuse to pull the race card, to point the finger. And we are now sending our children back to schools this week and next week with the mindset that a man was killed by his parole agent and there's been no answers. There are police officers in schools, armed police officers in schools. There are probation officers in school, armed probation officers in schools. So what are we telling our kids? What are we showing our kids? Your PO will shoot and kill you if you don't abide, abide by his commands and then he can just go on vacation or whatever the case may be. So when we talk about building trust within our community and staying quiet on an issue like this, it is not helping anybody. And again, I understand that you all do not have the say-so to make a decision. You all do not have the say-so to say, make something happen, but you all have the influence to be able to say, make something happen because this is you all's community. We have our elected officials and we have our mayor here. So when I tell you this is bigger than just people protesting or bigger than people just being on social media, kids are going back to school. There's going to be trouble when they're looking at their white teachers and there's young black men and they don't want to take that direction. When those police officers are in the school and the kids feel like they want to start some trouble or get into some trouble. So I'm going to continue to come down here, I'm going to continue to ask for support, I'm going to continue to ask for advocacy, I'm going to continue to ask you all to use your voices to do whatever it is that you can within your power to help us seek justice because if not, it's not going to be good around here for anybody and we can't act like that's not a possibility. Thank you.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Stanton, I'm from Harbor Creek. I'm going on to my sixth year being here in Erie County. I've lived many places all over the United States and I have studied Erie County. My background is in sociology and I have studied Erie County from many angles, through the churches, through elementary school situations, through medical care, through housing, through politics. And in my opinion, I find Erie County to be very, very, very behind. Erie County and this city right here is more like it's in the 40s than in the first 21st century. The situation with Marcello, it's a racist, it has all the appearance of being a racist situation. And I come wanting to challenge this group of people to not just look at an incident of racism, but to look at systemic racism. That is what is keeping Erie behind. If the systemic racism is not addressed, is not acknowledged, if people do not become informed of what it really means, systemic racism, and if it's not addressed and done something about it, these incidents are going to keep happening. I haven't been here long, but I've made it my intention to listen to the communities. And this isn't the first time that this kind of thing has happened here in the city of Erie, in the county of Erie. I'm really challenging all of you to read a book. It's a book written by a white person or white people. And the name of that book is White Fragility. I'm challenging you to read it with your mind open and your heart open so that, I don't know the role, and this gentleman said that, you know, certain things you don't have the ability to do. I don't know what you can do and what you can't do, but I know that each one of you can read a book and with your mind open and your heart open. If each one in this room would do that... If each one in this room would do that, that would make, start the seeds of something for a really big change here in the city of Erie and in the county of Erie, and you could be agents to start the process of bringing Erie City into the 21st century. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jayce Tsheskey, and I'm a resident of the city of Erie, and I'm here to address the same issue that the other speakers addressed. And I heard the question asked, "What can we do within our power?" And I found myself reading a lot of different bylaws of city council and county council, and this one just stood out to me particularly with city council. It says, "Council by ordinance may create, change, alter, and abolish all boards, commissions, and advisory bodies in the city government, and may create commissions and other bodies with advisory powers." Is there anything with that, within that law, that we can use to help the situation? And has that been exhausted? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jennifer Kennedy, speaking as a private citizen of Erie. As a biracial female, who does not really show the black side, I look like my white family, I've had privileges that my black families have not. And to speak to the other woman's point about the systemic racism, is the fact that we have the ability to do something about it. And we're not looking for equality, we're looking for equity, which means that because of that systemic racism, being held back means that there are legal justice opportunities that are not afforded to them, they're not being treated the same way, we are not being treated the same way, and we're asking to come up to that level, which means that you as this board has an opportunity to use your powers to see where perhaps they're not treated the same way. What else can be done to provide them, to get them up to the level? If it was your families, how would you wanna be treated? Would you stand for that? Justice is not being served, and it is within your power to speak, and to level the playing field for this family, and as others have said, to level the playing field for all citizens in Erie. That's what we're asking for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sandy Tsheskey. I'm here for the Justice for Marcello as well. I wanted to say that I have lived in California, I grew up here, lived in California many years, and I've seen the prejudice that happens there, and the violence that took place, over shootings and stuff like that. Now, the Woodard family and the Justice for Marcello has kept it very, very calm here, and respectful to everybody. And I'm wondering, if there isn't something done, how long do you think that cordialness, nonviolence, sooner or later, it's going to break loose? And then everybody's going to blame the black community for doing it. Everybody will do that. It happens everywhere. Something should be being done now, and nothing is. We're seeing nothing whatsoever. The prejudice-ness here, I've been back in Erie for three years, the prejudice, especially by law enforcement, I cannot speak for state police, I live in the city of Erie, I've spoke to Titus about certain things, I've called your office, but they put me through. A lot of your police officers belong to the Proud Boys, guarantee, a lot of them do. They are prejudiced. When you call, I live over on the west side, lower west side, I have witnessed and been in the situation on a domestic call, five calls before the police did anything. They don't care, five calls. It's been addressed to the chief, everything else. I know people that have been jumped in the park for things. It's, your police officers don't give one shit about not only the black people, but the people that are in lower-income areas. I guarantee that. You see, you get a call of a domestic fight up on the upper west side, in a nicer area, they're going to do something. They're going to do something. Like I said, myself, I'm biracial, and I got that white skin, but I've had a lot of people come to me about being prejudiced. That's one thing I'm not. If anything, I'm prejudiced against Caucasian people, because of what the proof has shown to me. Now, all we're asking is, if you can help, step up, look at the situation, and please, please, do something for the community to help us. We don't feel safe. It's not just the black people prejudice against the Caucasians no more. Like the one lady said, Erie is like the 1940s again. It really is. I wouldn't be surprised to see crosses burning out in the yard soon, because nothing's being done. Now, on the other hand, I also worry if he is prosecuted, what's going to happen from that side to the black people? I mean, it's, sooner or later, it's going to get intense, and not everybody is Michael Woodard that keeps everything very calm. Sooner or later, you're gonna get somebody that gets really, really pissed off, and they start. And once they start, people will follow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
My name's Michael Woodard. I wanna come here on behalf of Justice for Marcello. I'm sure everyone, this rings a bell, not only in Erie, PA, not only in Pittsburgh, but hopefully, we're getting this across the nation. We don't want this to be a situation where it's felt at home. We need this to be a situation that's felt across the nation, because of, this happened for the second time in American history. I don't know if anybody has reached out to maybe his mom, or his dad personally. I'm here today, we understand what's going on behind those closed doors, we understand that every case needs to be handled from A to Z, we understand we weren't first in line, but to the community, this is the number-one case in Erie, Pennsylvania, and hopefully, this is ringing bells across the nation once again. Martha Bradley and Charles Woodard are his parents. Reaching, has anyone reached out to them possibly? See, I'm not gonna come yelling, I'm gonna come in from you guys' standpoint and push outward. Has anybody provided any type of funding for the family, the children? There's resources, possibly, mental health, school, any type of counseling, anything we know that you can help with, this is what we need, while this is going, investigation is underway. Our patience has definitely been, you know, tried many times at multiple levels, and we have been at that level, and understanding where we're at with this, but we're asking for what your resources can do to reach out to the family, the friends, the fiance, anyone at stake, maybe even a ride support for his mom and his dad. We know this winter months are coming up, any type of funding for that. Twenty-seventh and German was the location where his body had laid to rest, is what I would say. And on the behalf of the family, maybe his children, show some support to possibly get that location as a statement, maybe to Marcello Ave, you know, put that in his name if anything. Also, where that house was located on that corner, maybe a memorial or something right on that corner there, because right now, all we have is glass and balloons and things like that, something that could be an actual statement that our city possibly can fund, or help us get on the way, or give us some type of avenues. I'm a contractor, you can reach out to me to help me, I'll install it for free, I just need the go-ahead on these locations, numbers eight-one-four, four-zero-three, two-four-eight-two. Also, have you guys received any actual facts from the governor's office that your, I see a couple heads are turning, I'm gonna get strict with this one. Who knows how we got that no comment from the governor's office? Does anyone know about, we got no comment, so I reached out to the governor's office, and I called, and I left a message with them yesterday stating that we got a no comment. And I'm asking them, was that from you, or was that from our media trying to hush us up, that the governor did not say that? So we all wanna see if anybody has any facts on no comment from the governor's office. I reached out to the Pennsylvania State Police, the major of the Pennsylvania State Police, try to move forward and try to get some answers to what's going on with this situation. This is not a local thing, this is gonna be pushed down to Harrisburg, we will travel to get this across the board. Locating FBI with, as in Pittsburgh, I'll be heading down there sometime next week, with whoever's gonna follow me to put this, push this case forward, to get hands on deck for this. Also, housing programs, renovation programs, Marcello's mom's house is in need of some help. Can, I'm not sure what Charles's house looks like at this time, but is there any resource to help with that? She has foundation problems, the water's leaking inside of her basement, she also had a fire that was set in the back of her home, that was under investigation, the detectives came back that it was a young kid that started, it was arson, two doors down, so we do know who that was. She's gonna need some type of funding, if not, because this is a juvenile, so if that cannot be taken care of by her juvenile, is you gonna get charged, since some type of funding comes from you guys, and a resource on helping move the family forward, and friends, and the community with this. Also, we're looking for possibly, because that area where she lives at, there is no lighting in that alleyway, so we're asking to possibly get a street light put in that alleyway to help protect her. She feels like her life is at stake right now, and is being threatened. I'm gonna install a light fixture in the back, just for temporary, we're looking for something like that also. And all we all know why we're here, is looking for resources from you guys to help the wound that's on the outside. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard? Here and none. Lori?
Ordinances for final passage, Council File Number 16548, Official Ordinance 582025. An ordinance amending Article 101 by adding subsection 101(c), authorizing a referendum on the question of studying the existing form of government and considering the advisability of adoption of an optional form of government or a home rule charter for the city of Erie. This ordinance repeals 262025 ordinance and expands the scope of the governmental study. Sponsored by Councilmember Titus, seconded by Councilmember Nelson, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16548, and now known as Official File Ordinance 582025, be finally passed by City Council. Members Flores, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Witherspoon. City Council passed Official File Ordinance 582025 by yeas five nays zero. Council File Number 16549, Official Ordinance 592025, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $23,200 of program income generated through the Home Program for the following Home M17 projects. Sponsored by Councilmember Titus, seconded by Councilmember Flores, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16549, and now known as Official File Ordinance 592025, be finally passed by City Council. Members Flores, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Witherspoon. City Council passed Official File Ordinance 592025, finally by yeas five nays zero. Council File Number 16550, Official Ordinance 602025, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $950,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof from the fiscal year 2425 PCCD Violence Intervention Prevention Grant. Sponsored by Councilmember Schaff, seconded by Councilmember Witherspoon, the Council File Bill Ordinance Number 16550, and now known as Official File Ordinance 602025, be finally passed by City Council. Members Flores, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Witherspoon. City Council passed Official File Ordinance 602025, finally by yeas five nays zero. Ordinances for first reading, Council File Number 16551, an ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the city of Erie, Article 14402, by amending subsection J to J1 and to subsection J2 as to the use of city-owned vehicles by police officers. Sponsored by Councilmember Nelson, seconded by Councilmember Schaff, the Council File Ordinance 16551, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Flores, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Witherspoon. City Council read and adopt, Council File Ordinance 16551 by yeas five nays zero on first reading. Council File Number 16552, an ordinance approving the plan of the Erie Sewer Authority for the issuance of an aggregate amount not to exceed $68,000? $460,000 sewer revenue bonds, series of 2025, and setting forth the amount, interest rates and maturity dates of the bonds, authorizing the authority to proceed with the plan of financing, authorizing the execution and delivery of a lease agreement, and the incurrence of lease rental debt thereby. Authorizing the specified officers of the city of Erie to prepare and certify the debt statement, and to do all other acts necessary to carry out the provisions of the ordinance setting forth the payment of the sewer revenue bonds and the source of such payments. Repealing all inconsistent ordinances and providing that ordinance is effective immediately. Sponsored by Councilmember Schaff, seconded by Councilmember Witherspoon, the Council File Ordinance Number 16552, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Flores, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Witherspoon. City Council passed Official File Ordinance 16552 by yeas five nays zero on first reading. Council File Number 16553, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $6,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof, for contribution from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania fiscal year 2023, certified local government grant acting through the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission. Sponsored by Councilmember Flores, seconded by Councilmember Nelson, the Council File Ordinance Number 16553, have been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Flores, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Witherspoon. City Council read and adopt, Council File Ordinance 16553 by yeas five nays zero on first reading. Council File Number 16554, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $36,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof, for an Erie Community Foundation 2025 Helping Today Grant to purchase a SCBA washer for firefighter cancer prevention and equipment maintenance. Sponsored by Councilmember Schaff, seconded by Councilmember Witherspoon, the Council File Ordinance Number 16554, have been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Flores, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Witherspoon. City Council read and adopt, Council File Ordinance 16554- City council read and adopt council file ordinance sixteen-five-fifty-four by yays five nays zero on first reading. Sixteen thousand, five-fifty-five, an ordinance appropriating the sum of one million, ninety-seven thousand, five-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof from the city of Erie ARP fund interest and will be used to fund the capital improvement fund. Sponsored by council member Schoff, seconded by council member Withers, council member Witherspoon. The council file ordinance number sixteen-five-fifty-five haven't been read is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Members Flores, Nelson, Schoff, Titus, Witherspoon. City council read and adopt council file ordinance sixteen-five-fifty-five by yays five nays zero on first reading. Council file number sixteen-five-fifty-six, an ordinance authorizing an increase in the non-electoral debt of the city of Erie, Erie County, Pennsylvania by authorizing and approving the issuance and sale in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed fifty-two million, three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars general obligation bonds, series of twenty-twenty-five, the twenty-twenty-five bonds, for the purposes recited herein, directing the city clerk to prepare, certify and file the required debt statement and to take all other necessary action. Covenanting that the city shall include the amount of annual debt service in its budget for each fiscal year, providing for registered bonds, date of the bonds and payment dates. Providing for facsimile, signatures, seal and authent, authent, authentication. Phew. Approving the form of the bonds, paying agents and authentication certificate endorsement and registration. Providing for temporary bonds, providing for the maximum stated principal maturity amounts and fixing the maximum rates of interest on the bonds. Awarding the bonds at private sale, creating sinking funds, authorizing the proper officers of the city to contact, contract with a bank for the services as a sinking fund depository and paying agent. Authorizing and directing the city clerk to certify and file with the Department of Community and Economic Development certified copies of the necessary proceedings. Covenanting that the proceeds of the twenty-twenty-five bonds shall not be used in such manner as to cause the twenty-twenty-five bonds to be arbitrage bonds under federal tax law provisions. Authorizing the proper officials, officers of the city to do all the things necessary to carry out the ordinance, providing for municipal bond insurance and rescinding all inconsistent ordinances. Sponsored by council member Witherspoon, seconded by council member Flores. The council file ordinance sixteen-five-fifty-six haven't been read is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Members Flores, Nelson, Schoff, Nelson? Schoff, Titus?
No.
Witherspoon. City council? Read and adopt council file order sixteen-five-fifty-six by yays three, nays two on first reading. Okay, in old business.
You have old business?
Yep. Um, resolved by the city council of the city of Erie that pursuant to section six-twenty-six of the Federal Cable Communications Policy Act of nineteen-eighty-four, forty-seven USC state law five-forty-six, and a public hearing held on Wednesday's, August sixth, twenty-twenty-five at approximately nine-thirty AM in city council chamber, six-twenty-six State Street Municipal Building, Erie, PA, the renewal of the non-exclusive cable television franchise agreement with Spectrum Northeast LLC Charter Communications, Inc., Spectrum Charter be hereby approved. Council members Flores, Nelson, Schoff, Titus, Witherspoon. City council pass the resolution, yays five, nays zero. This takes us to new business.
Motion to move the balance?
Spin, move the balance? Second. Call for the vote?
Uh, separations, number one.
Separation. Any further separation? Here and none, Laurie.
Okay, moving the balance of the agenda. Members Flores, Nelson, Schoff, Titus, Witherspoon. Resolution passes. A motion by council member Schoff, seconded by council member Witherspoon, that the attached civil service ranking list certified by the Erie Civil Service Commission Board's AMB of the city of Erie effective September first, twenty-twenty-five through August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six is hereby approved and accepted. All new Erie police officers will be hired in the order on, off the certified list in accordance with Erie Civil Service Rules and Regulation, Regulations. Discussion?
Yeah, um, just to, just to clarify. So we used to vote on all the officers as they were hired. This, this would end that, right? Or continue to not do that?
We haven't done that recently. Um, I think my best recollection is about a year ago.
Yeah.
We started having the list. What, what would happen is you would not get the list, uh, and that didn't seem to make.
I'm sorry. That didn't seem to make sense to me that you wouldn't have the list in advance. The state law requires it to be hired in the order in which they are ranked. And so you would now receive the ranking in advance. And then any hiring would be done in accordance with that, that ranking.
So now the individual officers do not appear on the agenda individually as they have, um, prior years? I remember last year when this was first brought up, I had raised concerns in which no one would see the names and a lot of fellow council members, I don't recall them, you know, mentioning an issue with it. So just now, back and forth, I was letting him know that, uh, we did this a year ago and this is the second time that we're doing this. So I brought it up in caucus as well. So hopefully there's some clarification on what changed. But it's just so that there's no bickering back and forth on who is listed. Now it's just the list is the list and we go off of that list. That's why I asked for the new list. Um, Betsa said he was gonna get that down to city, city clerk's office so that we can get the list.
Do we have a say-so and a yea or a nay on the hiring?
In terms of the funding part, yes. In terms of the selection of the individual, no. But I think that the, the problem, the problem that you've run into or that we've encountered in the past is people see names on a list and, and they're wondering, well, who else is on the list? There's no, I mean, to me, there's really no reason and no excuse for you not to have the list in advance. It is a public document, so you have access to it. But, um, I think as Councilwoman Flores said, it makes sense that it's in your possession.
I want to say that a list did come down. I wasn't sure that it.
That, that may have happened, but in, when you were out, um, Ms. Flores raised the issue that she wants to make sure that the clerk you has the list in your possession. I'll make sure that that happens tomorrow. I haven't seen, seen it, but every year it comes out, um, for fire, or for police and every other year it comes out for fire. You should have those. They are posted on the third floor, but they should be in your physical possession. I think it makes just, it makes it easier.
Any other discussion? Voting on the resolution. Members Flores, Nelson?
No.
Schoff, Titus, Witherspoon. Resolution passes, yays four, nays one. This takes us to committee reports. I'll be short.
Councilwoman Flores?
I just wanted to mention that the kids are back in school. So please make sure that we're giving ourselves times when we are traveling in the morning and in the afternoons. Um, children sometimes are not paying attention to us, so it's our job to pay attention to them. And I try to be as vigilant when I'm driving as possible because people do pop out, pets pop out. So just be very cautious. So we got a lot of road work going on. I also wanted to say that there was a, a decent turnout for all three day, well, I, I think a great turnout for all three days of Celebrate Erie, um, even though on Sunday it did rain. Um, it's always great to see the community enjoying the events that the city puts on and also coming together and enjoying the vendors and everything. I know the Sea Wolves are back in town, so if you haven't made it to a game, definitely do so. The summer is winding down, so make sure that we're enjoying what we have left because it's shortly coming where we're going to have sunset sooner than we want and it's going to get dark. So just be very, very cautious out there on the roads. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Nelson.
Two committees to report on. Uh, we had our, uh, capital fund, uh, water reserve fund meeting. The fund is compared to other endowments and that sort of nature. Uh, this past quarter performed in the top three percentile. In the past year, it performed in the top eight percentile. Uh, that's something that I think, uh, a couple members of council in the four years I've been on have been really active to make some adjustments as, uh, there's been some shifts in, uh, the economic climate. So, uh, those, those have wore well for our growth in that fund. Um, I also am the liaison to the airport authority. They announced today that the midday flight to Charlotte was expanding to a larger plane. So, uh, a little, a little news from that. And that's it from our committees.
Thank you. Doctor?
Thank you. EMTA did not meet in July. Uh, publicly they had a, a retreat style because they had, uh, new board members coming on and they wanted to get everybody up to speed. They are meeting on the twenty-fifth, so next week. The land bank met on this past Monday. There is gonna be a change in the chair. That discussion will come up though, and, and the change in as to who that will go to will be at the next meeting. Uh, the zoo board will meet next week as well on eight-twenty-six. So I'll have more to report out as far as my liaison assignments. Uh, and in closing, there's a quote that sticks with me quite often as I, that I've been, that I've been coming up a lot in the meetings that I've been, um, just watching with, with county council and then the school board and other places and also, uh, as I said, appears. Uh, don't expect me to be considerate in a space where I am not considered. Um, and as I think about the people who spoke tonight, I can't reiterate enough is that the longer that the, the answers remain unknown, the more dangerous and the more tension that is gonna continue to build. Um, there, there needs to be more communication. And I'm gonna call upon, um, our DA who I know is, is actively doing an investigation, but to please be more transparent as the, the lack of communication, um, is falling the heaviest on our city. Uh, and, and it is, our people are hurting, our community is hurting. The hurt is big, the hurt is real and, and the silence is, is very, very loud. In closing, again, we are heading back to school like councilperson Flores had shared. So please stay alert, stay aware, uh, and, and remember that we are heading back into school with a lot of hurt in our hearts. Um, and so just to be mindful, just to be mindful as, as we go back in and to be, uh, kind because we don't know what, what others are kind, we're going through right now. Thank you.
Yeah. I did reach out to Burton Davis. I did reach out to him, uh, this office, Burton Davis, one of the most opposition on the issues that's arising in the city, um, as we do, uh, the protest. I cannot control, like, you know, I can't control the tension, but I am making them aware of what could initially happen to this. Seattle is only building like a volcano right now. So many weeks this is continuing, continuing. I did reach out to him, how to de-escalate, you know, property. So these are two, and here's what I did reach out to and give them notes on. What is going on in this, we gotta tell them that either hell on, control, see if they can further to get the, to the D also let them know what.
Excuse me, sir.
Yes, sir.
If you would see me afterwards, because normally we don't allow, but what you were saying made sense. But I have to cut you off at that point. But you and I can dialogue shortly after the meeting. We're just about done. Thank you. Councilwoman Schaw?
Thank you, Mr. President. I attended the COG meeting, August seventh. Lake City joined COG. There'll be a coastal cleanup. They're looking for volunteers. I don't know the exact date. And August eleventh, I attended the seventieth anniversary of the redevelopment authority meeting. They are, um, continuing to make use of land, properties for people to purchase and develop, which is all good. Mr. Jason Chek, our solicitor, um, went to the parking authority meeting with me and we talked about some of the concerns of the citizens that come before us at the parking tow and review board hearing. And it was, um, a good meeting that way to, um, talk to them about different concerns about sign placement and, um, whatnot. We did have a tow and review board hearing, um, this past Thursday, which I was a part of. And I worked at Celebrate Erie for the three days and it was great to see it being so well-attended. And I worked with, um, nice people and the children were, uh, really interested. We were working, um, with the kids' family area and doing artwork with them and they really enjoyed it and they were very thankful too. Um, it was nice to see them out with their guardians, enjoying a nice day. I am thankful for all who worked and volunteered and put together Celebrate Erie. It was a very nice event. The firefighters' challenge will, um, be taking place tomorrow, which starts at eight, at eight o'clock in the morning and goes till they're done or so around five or six. It's Thursday through Saturday. We do have, um, around twenty of our own Erie firefighters participating in this challenge that is, um, put on by snap tight hose. Um, they do need volunteers as well. I noticed on social media they're looking for, um, volunteers for this nice community event. There will be about one-hundred-and-fifty competitors. And that will, uh, certainly be interesting by seeing all the different things that they're setting up through Perry Square. I also, um, went into the Boston store at, uh, Celebrate Erie on Saturday and they had, uh, the park survey there and people were planning, uh, their own little parks, I thought was that what was pretty neat. The kids were, um, designing their own park and there were large boards set up and people were able to, uh, enhance what they would want in their parks. So that was, um, well-done. I met the, um, person who's in Erie, um, working with this and unfortunately I forgot to write her name down. But, um, thank you for the planning commission on this and they were there. And, um, I want to, um, continue to say, um, that I, um, definitely would like to see justice for Marcello Woodard and his family and pray that, um, violence is never the answer. So hopefully very soon, um, there will be some answers. And be safe for the back-to-school time. All the drivers really need to slow down. That is a concern because, um, I've been in a couple of situations where I noticed three people going through red lights. And a couple of the times, um, it was very, very, very close that someone could have gotten hit. So we really need to be, um, more aware of pedestrians, especially this. Especially This Time Of The Year When They're Off To School. Thank You.
Thank You Very Much. I'd Like To Congratulate The PAL Organization For Putting On An Outstanding 3-on-3 For Our Youth And Our Community This Past Weekend. Even Though The Numbers Were Down, The Competition Was Traveling Basketball Teams. There Was A Youth Funeral Services At The Same Time. But Those Young Men And Ladies Had A Great Time. The Weather Held Out, And I Was Told By Several Individuals Watching That Maybe You Guys Should Do This Two Or Three Times A Year. I Told Them I Don't Think So. It's A Lot Of Work Goes Into It. But It Was Successful. Thank You, PAL Organization. Also Thank You To The Public Works Department, Who Has Supported The Basketball League. For Some Reason, Our Benches That We Use To, Our Players Sit On, Has Been Shredded On Two Or Three Different Occasions. And It's Not Youth Violence Because It Was Pretty Sharp From A Saw. So It's Just Being Downright Stupid. But They Were There. I Made A Call, They Came, And The Games Went On. And I Thank The Mayor And His Staff For All The Support That They Have Given. Our Total Participation This Year, It Was Down Also, But It Was In The Round Figures Of 536 Youth That We Had Between The Hours Of 5:30 And 9:45. And Another Thanks To The Brothers And Sisters Who Volunteer Their Services And Act As Security Along With The Erie Police Department. We Thank Them Very Much. Mayor? Attorney?
No report. I'll Just Be Brief. We've Got A Lot Of Things Going On As I'm Sure All Of You Know, With It Being Summer, And This Last Weekend We Had Celebrate Erie, And That Was Closed Down State Street From 9th Down To About 3rd. And I Was At The Events In The Evening For Five Hours, And They Were, I Got To Speak At Each One, And They Were Very Engaging. And Of Course Now The Firefighters Challenge Is Starting, Which Has Another Part Of Stage Street Closed Down Around Perry Square, And That I Think Will Be An Exciting Event Also. And I Know We're All Impatient With Getting Some Decisions On Cello's Murder And Who Did It And Who Should Be Prosecuted For It. I Think We Still Need To Be Patient And Wait. And Once They Get All The Information And They Can Make A Decision, Hopefully They'll Announce It. I Don't Know How Soon It'll Be. It Could Be More Than A Month Yet From What I Understand. But I Just Ask Everybody To Be Patient. Let's Make Sure, Let's Hear What The Decision Is. Thank You.
Jason?
I Was Just Going To Build Off What Kathy Said, That We Double Teamed, Went Over And Went To The Parking Authority Meeting, And We Just Wanted To Provide, You Know, The Macro Trends That We See With Parking Appeals, And They Gave Some Specific Examples Of Issues Where Tickets Or The Parking Board Refunded Their Money Because We Felt That The Ticket Either Shouldn't Have Been Issued Or There Were Circumstances That Did That. As You Guys Have Seen, Because All Of You Guys I Think Have Been On The Parking Appeals Board Over The Last Like Three Years, At Least One Appearance. So It Was A Great Time With Kathy, And I Think We Gave Them Good Information.
Thank You. Laurie?
No report here.
No report? Meeting Is Adjourned.
City Council Adjourned At 8:45 p.m. Members Witherspoon, Flores, Nelson, Schaff, Titus.